We're good to go?
We're good to go.
Thank you. Okay, welcome everyone to the regular medium council for November 16th, 2020. You have, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have before you a copy of tonight's agenda. I'm looking for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. We might have to, I have noticed that our delegation isn't here yet. So we're going to have to try and work around that. And if everybody's okay with that, we will adopt it as it is and fit him in should he passes. His order in the agenda. So looking for a motion to adopt. Counselor Chambers, second by Counselor Anderson. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. Item number three is any declarations of interest? None being noted, we can move on to item number four announcements, awards, ceremonies and presentations. Anything from counsel? Nothing noted. S A O Smith?
Nothing from administration worship.
Okay, so it doesn't look like our delegation has joined us yet. So we'll move on to business arising. I don't believe we have any business arising. So go straight into administrative inquiries and I'll pass it back to S A O Smith.
Thank you worship. We'll start with the Director of Finance, please.
Thank you.
I got him in the queue.
Okay, maybe we'll just stop right there and let him do his presentation then. Sorry, Sam. Oh, there he is. Welcome, David. Tonight we have David Conley with us of Cheetah Resources and he will be doing a presentation. So welcome and I'm going to pass the floor over to you.
Oh, wow, that was quick. I was sort of expecting seven o'clock. So thank you very much, Mayor Jameson and hello counsel. Did I keep you waiting? I just managed to connect now. Are we all good?
A couple, no, it was actually very good timing, couple of minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. And I understand I have 20 minutes. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so with Stacy's help, we're going to whip through this very quickly so we can have some quality time together. Purpose of today's trip to Hay River is to meet with you. We also spent, had a really good time with MTS, many transportation services. I look forward to reporting on that. And we went out and met in Fort Rez. So you've seen some of this, most of this presentation before when we were together in March. So I'll go through it. There's the Cheetah, Cheetah camp at Nacho Lacho. The next slide says, please don't invest anything based on what I'm about to tell you. And the next slide is, I believe, if we can just move on to it, I think I'm, I think Stacy, you're controlling.
Yeah, correct.
If you can go forward one, please, that'd be great. Critical minerals have become important to Canada, the US, Japan, Europe and so on. I could give you 10 of these slides. This is just the agreement between Canada and the US. And if we can move on again. Rare earths are, there's 17 rare earths and they're used in almost anything that's technical or involved with the clean tech, clean tech environment. Or the technological environment, electronic, the medical environment, including things like your regular vehicle has 30 uses of rare earths. Of course, EV, electric vehicles who have many more, windmills, medical and so on. And if we can move on again. This slide, some of you may have seen before, but there's a growing demand and shortage for rare earths. So what we're advancing this project for, there is a demand for, next please, Stacy. We're the only mining company in Canada that's been selected by Canada, become part of their Canada's exhilarated growth services. So in theory, this means that we have a single axle portal to 37 government programs. I think because we're the first mining venture, they're still all running to catch up to it. Yes, we've got the portal, but the programs that never serviced mining before. So we're really proud to be part of this, but we're yet to reap the fruits of it. That map sort of positions where we are. The project is south of the Yellowknife, the goods flow through Hay River. They go on for further processing in Saskatoon and then off to world markets. Next, please. So who's Cheetah? Well, if you're outside Canada, we'd be called Vital Metals. We're traded on the Australian Stock Exchange. We did that because junior companies, I don't, I don't want to use the word can't, but they're having extremely difficult time raising money on the Canadian or US stock exchanges to even the European stock exchanges to invest in the Northwest Territories. And we saw those figures that came out again where exploration is down, they came out yesterday or earlier this, maybe last week. Down by half here in the NWT and up by 17% in Europe, sorry, in Quebec and Ontario. So people just don't want, are not enthusiastic about investing here, but the Australians are still willing to take the risk or they haven't fully understood it, but they're willing to fund the project here. We were set up in 2019 after Vital Metals had looked at 400 projects around the world and chose to invest in Nacho Lacho and a similar project in Tanzania. Next. So what are we doing? Cheetah Resources is developing world-class rare, the world-class rare earth Nacho Lacho project southeast of Yellowknife and I guess it's northeast of Hay River and a hydrometallurgical processing facility for rare earth concentrates in Saskatoon. Cheetah plans to commence production at Nacho Lacho in 2021 and aims to produce a minimum of 5,000 tons per annum of concentrated rare earth oxides. So 5,000 tons per annum isn't a lot. It's about three and a half, 1,500 ton barges. But rare earths are used, a very small amount of rare earths mixed in traditional metals vastly changes and improves their performance. So they're more like vitamins than they are proteins or carbohydrates. We aim to become the lowest cost producer of mixed rare earth oxide outside of China by developing one of the highest grade rare earth deposits in the world and the only deposit capable of being benef- of benefication or concentration by using a low impact sorting. So no water, no chemicals and no tailings. And as I mentioned, we're advancing a project in Tanzania as well. Stacy? We've had lots of support and we very much appreciate the support we've had from Hay River. Each time we've gone in front of the Mackenzie Valley Land and Water Board, it's made a real difference. Typically, the only we've had no negative interventions from any of the communities that were involved in. The only, we always get multiple comments from E and R and lands and we do our best. Well, the board is always, the water board has always felt we've addressed those comments fairly and so we move on. Next, please. I think you're familiar with the map. We're situated sort of equidistant between four indigenous communities. And there's also an overlap of the Cleecho. So there's Dilo, Data, the Yellowknives, Dino Nukway, the North Slave Maydi and the Cleecho all have overlapping claims. And then the two major communities that our project will impact, hopefully socially and economically mostly is our Hay River and Yellowknife. Next, please. Avalon still exists. It retains the basal zone. That's a much larger zone. However, we've acquired the top 100 meters or so. We believe that has a multi-generational resource. We're developing the T-zone as the demonstration project over the next three years. And starting this winter, we're beginning the development of the Tardif Zone, which we hope will be the multi-generational project for, for Cheetah. And you can see the Tardif Zone over on the, I think it's the left-hand side of your, your screen. Next, please. So up near the top of that, just to give you the concept, is the small demonstration and then the multi-generational project south of it being the Tardif Zones. Next, please. So during the demonstration project, these are the quantities and values that we hope, expect to produce. Last year, when we showed you this chart, 2021 was actually 2020, but COVID happened. So everything moved sideways a year. We are still pushing hard to be exporting product from Canada and the Northwest Territories, Saskatoon and from Saskatoon to the rest of the world by the end of 2021. Next, please. Very simply, the ore gets blasted, call it a quarry, call it a pit, crushed, screened down to both the sides of marbles and then put through a high-tech sorting machine that much like the diamond machines that fluoresce the diamonds. And there's a puff of air and diamonds going to one bucket and the quartz with a waste rock into another bucket. Then that mixed rare earth concentrate goes off to the hydrometallurgical plant we're building in Saskatoon. Next. So if you wanted to, we could all sit there and do this sorting by hand. Red rocks are the valuable rare earth ore and the white rocks are the waste, are the quartz, which are the waste rock. Next. The highlighted points here are, this is an amazing raising of the bar in terms of lowering the environmental impact. This, I don't think any of us know of a mining project that doesn't use water, doesn't use chemicals and doesn't produce tailings. And that's the case for this project. Next, please. This is the sorter. So when Avalon had this project, this building would have been the size of a couple football fields and it would have had lots of chemicals and lots of grinding and lots of tailings and quite a significant amount of water. Instead, conveyor belt will flow in, x-ray light will fluoresce, separate the, or identify the rare earths versus the quartz and a puff of air will puff it into, onto a conveyor belt and it will flow out and get bagged and put on barges. Next. And after it's on the barge, it will come to Hay River. And I think when we last talked, it was sort of 50/50 whether it would come to Hay River or Yellowknife over Ice Road and/or barge. I would say now it's 90/10 that it will come to Hay River. The folks at MTS put on a very good presentation to the engineers today, and I think that was been very, very well received. We haven't crunched price, but we certainly have understood a number of the, I'd understood them, but now the engineers understand a number of the advantages of the hub. Next. Oh, disco. I won't go back to the next slide. In the first year, we'll do whatever it takes to get where we need to get into an odor of the project. So it will probably be some mixture of Hay River and Yellowknife, Ice Road and little barges and big barges just because of such a tight time schedule. But the stabilized vision is now focusing on, on Hay River. Next, please. So the NWT, from rocks to multiple end products, is quite a complex supply chain. Happy to talk about that a lot. We're hopeful with our partner Saskatchewan Research Council that after we put it through our hydrometallurgical plant, it looks like they may now be in a position, or will be by 2022, to actually separate it into individual rare earths, which would mean Canada would have secured the first four steps in the supply chain of the 17 rare earths. And we're, that would be good news and we hope to get there. But there are six other countries outside China and Russia that also would like this product. Next. It's shovel ready and this is a slide that we often share with Canada about all the economic and environmental and social benefits of advancing this project. And I think you've got the decks, so I will leave it with you to read later. Next. Once we move from the three-year demonstration project and we're looking at starting that move, actually in January, we'll be starting the drilling that will help define the mine plan in the Tardif Resource. It'll be a two and a half year or so to permit that, but we'll probably looking at beginning the permitting in the middle of 2021 with the view of being able to start rolling out the commercial project is 2024. And that time, if that happens, nothing is for sure, but the goal would be that that would then be a multi-generational mine. Next. We're pretty proud of this. My fear is we won't be able to reproduce this next year as we hire more people. But 86% of our staff are northern residents and 64% of them are indigenous. Of the people at camp, I think it's 82% are northern residents and 73% are indigenous. Now, in a percentage basis, that is about double the long-term average of the diamond mines. And as I say, we're proud of it, but as we staff up, we understand that it may be difficult to to be, to double, to remain, to have such a high performance relative to the diamond mines. But we use the diamond mines as our measuring post. We can't afford their huge IBAs. So we're trying to demonstrate that our voluntary behavior will equal or exceed theirs. Next, please. So what is new since we met in March? The short operations completed safely without incident. All the long-term lead equipments in Canada has been manufactured and is in Canada or at site. Various Mackenzie Valley approvals have happened. Our Canadian Operations Manager, Ray Angulov, who's been involved with two prior rare earth projects, has moved to Yellowknife. COVID hit, we shut the camp. We then reopened the camp, but as a result of COVID, we had to push back the extraction of the rare or rare earth ore for a year. We did plan some site visits. COVID canceled those. We're going to put out a virtual video. We have concluded a term sheet to build the processing plant in Saskatoon. And the government at the GNWT has contributed to the definition drilling that's going to happen for the, the full-scale project this winter. Next. Just to give you some visuals, upper left-hand corner, that's the 40-year, there's been 40 or 50 years of activity on site. That's the core library. But we have to move it because we're going to blast and the blast, it's within the blast zone. So that's in the process of being moved. To upper right is clearing the T-zone where the mining is going to happen. Lower left is relaxation, watching a hockey game and lower right is either clearing one of the storage pads for the fuel or the T-zone for getting down to rock. I'm not sure which from here. Next. Upper left, back in the 80s, there was actually a tunnel put in or added, put into the T-zone. So it's been almost 50 years since people have been working on this project. It was flooded and it's not good to go blasting and digging where things are flooded. So this is that we're draining it. I think that's Clifford Larkin on the bulldoze. I think Clifford is actually from Hay River. Lower to the left-hand corner, camps don't work well if you don't feed people well. So Susie is preparing a meal. And we're not nearly as fancy as the diamond mines. Basically, we're McPherson tents. And if you were working at site, this would be what your accommodations would look like, but there's a really warm stove, stove in there. Next. So what's the plan in the coming year? Because we pushed back due to COVID, it meant that we had to extend our permit and water license. And thank you, Hay River, for your town, the town for the letter of support. The only comments we really received were from lands and environment. And I believe we've addressed all of those and they wanted more security. So we gave them more security. And hopefully that permit will be extended later this month. Drilling on the Tardif Zone is anticipated in anticipation of scaling up. This year will be the Ice Road and it will likely be the last year of the Ice Road. After that, we hope to switch to barges. Right now, Cheetah staff and Yellowknife are all working from their home. We will be establishing a head office in the coming months. This year, we'll see the completion of the pit operations. So all of the mining, they're moving the rock out of the ground and crushing it is going to take place this year. And then over the next three years, it'll be sorted. So one big mining campaign and then that rock will be sorted. Commission of the sorting operations, transporting the concentrated ore from site to Saskatoon and starting the permitting process for scaling up our operations and finally completing, we expect to have the Saskatoon plant completed by October of next year. So that's a really busy year and I think Stacy, if we go next, that's going to be the end of the presentation other than asking for, for questions. So sorry if I really ran through that, but I was trying to be conscious of the time limits.
Thanks, David, and I'm going to go to counsel for questions, comments. Deputy Mayor Bouchard, go ahead.
Yeah, David, just a question on, so I think the work that comes in on the barge, is it going to be on trucks already? Is it going to be transferred from a container to a, to a truck? And I, would, would we expect to see in Hay River? Is it, is there any concern with the, the ore itself? Is it going to be labeled dangerous goods or anything like that? It just, what will we expect to see in Hay River?
So Robert, the, the ore is, it's a red rock. It's inert. It's, it'll be about the size of marble. So it's not going to be fine. Like if this were coming out of a traditional concentration project, the ores would tend to be sort of very fine-grained sand or pulverized rock and that, that can cause issues depending on what particular material it is. But this will be essentially sorted red rock. It will be in closed bags. There's no plan currently to put it in containers. There's been a bit of talk about it. But at this point, the shipping mechanism would be on pallets and bags onto the barges. And then either, and then trans shipped at NTCL site either onto trucks or rail. And that hasn't been resolved yet. In the first year, I'm almost sure it'll be trucks because it'll be a relatively small quantity. In the subsequent years, that's still a, a decision. But the material itself is, is inert.
Thank you. Any other questions from counsel? Go ahead, Counselor Dory.
Thanks, Worship. Thanks, David, for the presentation. Just a quick question there on, on your numbers. When you are, when you guys are at, when you get to your full-scale operation there as you're, as you're planning, what do you, what are your predictions as far as employment numbers go? Like as far as people on site, what do you, what do you guys envision there?
Thank you, Counselor Dory. During the demonstration period, we anticipate 25 to 30. The production level, assuming the world markets react the way we think they will, the protection level for the full scale would, would probably be three times the level of the demonstration project. And we have a model of precisely, but we think it would be somewhere between 75 and 100 persons. And at this point, it would still be being done on a seasonal basis. So about eight months a year. Operations beginning in April and wrapping up right after the last barge, so middle of October.
Thank you. Any other questions from counsel? Counselor Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you, Worship, and thanks for the presentation, David. Just a couple of things. So have you got any plans on where your head office is going to be located? And secondly, with respect to staff rotation and so forth, how's that going to happen? Is it going to be a two, three-week type of rotation or how's that going to work?
Well, Counselor Anderson, my first answer, I'm going to have to be blunt and I'm not going to make you happy, but it's going to be in Yellowknife. And it'll be a staff of about five, three permanent and then probably four that are cycling in, including two from Australia. So I know that's not the answer you wanted to hear. That's what it is right now. In terms of rotations at site, during the COVID period, we've been looking at fairly long rotations. I anticipate, but it's not finalized, that when we get to standing operations, that it'll be no more than two weeks and possibly one week with, the goal will be to have the goal, goal is to have no Southerners, but there's always some specialized part-time people that won't live here. But in terms of the regular staff, the goal is to fire, is to not have the practice of flying people in from down south, but to have the practice of bringing people in from communities.
Thank you. Any other questions from counsel? Go ahead. Further, Counselor Anderson.
Just one last question, David. With respect to resupply, will it come out of Yellowknife or is it going to come from Hay River? Where is the resupply for food and, and other materials going to places?
So we've challenged MTS. The way we approached them was saying, this is what we would like to accomplish, not give us a price for this or give us a price for that. My hope, and I, and it was a good meeting and I believe under the leadership of Stephen Hagerman, that they will take this approach is, we said, we would like, we would like a solution where we're not flying very much to camp, that all of our stuff gets gathered, gathered and handled and cataloged and tracked in one place. And when the barge goes to site, that it gets on the right barge and that doesn't end up in Cambridge Bay. And also that when the ore leaves site, it's going to be leaving, the shipping period is about four years, sorry, four months. But we need to feed it in on a more level basis to Saskatoon. Saskatoon will have some storage, but not the ability to store a whole year's worth of concentrate. So we would see, we would hope that the solution that MTS will provide us will be one where it comes off the barge. it comes off the barge, they find a place to store it. And they transship it onto either rail or truck. So back to your employment question, while those jobs wouldn't be at site. People were talking multiple barge trips up to five. And goods emanating from being collected and consolidated and leaving Hay River. And then the ore, if you will, being managed and transshipped and stored in Hay River. So while those may show up as MTS jobs, those would be jobs that would be driven by our, our activity. The, the final answer, of course, depends on MTS coming back, providing that sort of wholesome solution. But if you look at it from moving a bunch of problems off my desk and onto the desk of some logistics experts. It would be a desirable solution if they did that at a reasonable price. I hope you have some influence.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? I did have, oh, I'm just going to ask a quick one here and then we'll go back to Counselor Dory. The scaled up or scaled up operations, is it the same process? Will it be the, you know, collect, crush, separate and ship? Or, and still no water, no, no chemicals and no tailings?
So. So yes, it would, it still uses the same sorting, sensor-based sorting technology. And so that piece of it would stay the same. It would need more sorters. And whether that is two or three more, whether we'd end up with a total of one more, so two sorters or three sorters. But each of those are the size of a forty-foot shipping container. We are, there, the engineers and metallurgists have had had some discussion of processing the fines. So whenever you crush rock, we're aiming to get everything sort of marble size. There are some fines. And if those fines were to be processed, as I understand it, there would be a minimum amount of water used in. However, you separate fines, I don't, I don't understand that. But there would be no chemicals and no tailings. But there could be some water in this process of separating fines. And I can get more of an understanding of that, but it's theoretical at this point and I don't understand it.
Thank you. Counselor Dory, you had a question?
Thanks, Worship. Yeah, no, I was just basically seeing if at this point there was anything further that the town of Hay River could assist on. Or if there's, there's anywhere we could be of use for this, like for advancing this project. If, if there is anything, I'm sure David knows how to find us.
Thank you, Counselor. Nothing at this moment. The we were a little bit surprised that we just got hit with about a thirty percent increase in our security when we went back to get our extension of our permits. But we don't have time to fight that and still stay on our track for 2021. So if I had more time, I'd ask you to help us with that fight, but we can't fight it, we're just going to pay.
And that was deposits for environmental?
Yeah, so nothing, nothing has changed in scope. Like, it was a extension. But the GNWT looked at the same facts they looked at previously and came up with a different answer.
Okay, fair enough. Good to know. So with that, I, looks like we're good for questions. So I want to thank you again, David, for keeping us in the loop and keeping us up to date with what's going on. And we look forward to, to seeing what, what happens in the future. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you all very much, I appreciate it. Have a good evening. Thanks.
Okay, so item number seven on our agenda is administrative inquiries. And again, I will pass this over to S A O Smith.
Thank you, Worship. Short week with the Remembrance Day last, last week happening. And thanks to Counselor Willows and everyone else who was involved in that ceremony last week. But it was a very busy week for us. By our council package, I guess. So we will have some, a bit of an update for you now, though. I'll pass it over to the Director of Finance, please.
Good evening, thank you, your worship. A few updates from finance and administration this evening. Representatives from council administration presented their capital plan to the public last week. Though there was not a significant turnout from the public. We did use the opportunity to have a finance committee meeting where we discussed our Q3 O and M and capital, which is before council this evening. Next few weeks will be quite hectic as we're in the process of refining our 2021 budget. So I'm anticipating there'll be another finance committee meeting. And we're looking to bring that information before council December seventh, with the goal of having final approval on the fourteenth. Lastly, there was a question last week from the Deputy Mayor regarding hours of operation. Just like to provide an update on that. Administration asked whether now is the right time to extend our hours. We agreed to wait until after the Christmas season and reassess at that time. Though there's still no known cases of COVID-19 here in town. The territory is still under public health order, which requires anyone returning to the territory to self-isolate for fourteen days. This means that any of our employees which are traveling for medical reasons are set the territory. That they're not able to work from the office, which reduces our level of coverage. During the tax payment season, we extended our hours as required to ensure that residents had time to complete payments. Additionally, in instances that members of the public could not make it in during hours. We've arranged appointments to resolve their concerns and provided education as to how to repayments through electronic methods. One of the initiatives that my department is undertaking is the process of digitizing our records and developing electronic forms and payment methods to improve our efficiency, reduce costs. And ensure that we can retain our level of service in the events that there is no break of COVID of COVID in here in town, which would require the office to close again. That's all from me, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our Director of Finance? Okay, none being noted, back to S A O Smith.
Thank you, Worship. The Director of Protective Services, please.
Videos give me a hard time here today. So we're just going to skip the video. Not too much from my end, I just thought to give you an update of where we are with recruitment. Presently, we're up to thirty-seven members. We've had a few join here over the last month or so. Recently, we're sitting at thirteen female members, which gives us about thirty-five percent of our crew is female. Out of that, we have twenty-eight EMRs on board, which is seventy-five percent of our staff are fully qualified medical responders. And nineteen are ten-on-one or certified structural firefighters. So we're doing fairly well with recruitment and having people available to do the job that we do. And right now, my major focus and what I'm doing is mostly around the safety side for the town of Hay River. Building a new MSDS database and working with new program. So it's easier for our guys to find the information when they need it, if something goes wrong in one of the workplaces. And that's about all I have for now.
Thank you. Any questions for our Director of Protective Services? None being noted, I'll pass it back to S A O Smith.
Thank you, your worship. The Director of Recreation, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. No significant changes to the operations and facilities at the community center currently. Update that the swimming pool has been, has been very well attended. We had two, two hundred and thirty-six swimmers last week, which has, has us at an average of about thirty-four swimmers daily. Great to see, great to see people back in the water and people seem very satisfied with, with the current procedures. We, walking track numbers are also very good at the, at the walking track. They continue to be high. And once again, we're getting good feedback on that side. We have a third block of fitness and after-school programs starting this week. That includes, continues to include yoga, jazzercise, that which are both offered by some local contractors. Kickboxing, boxing and spin classes that are offered by our own rec programmer. And, and other, other fitness activities. But those are the, the major activities that that seem to be most popular at this time. And registrations continue to be good for those. The Curling Club appears to be running well. I haven't talked to anybody on the executive or any of their ice makers yet. But our maintenance crew have talked to the ice makers and they're getting good feedback on the, on the ice at this point. Which is a good indication that our ice plant is operating well. We have started with the Festival of Trees Committee. They've started to decorate some trees around the community center. My understanding is that at this point, there, there have been thirty-two groups or individuals that have confirmed they, they'll put a tree up at the community center. Those trees are going up around the walking track in the main aquatic center lobby. And, and in a couple other areas that are easily accessible by, by the public. It's, to me, it's a win-win. It's a, makes the community center look good. And, and we're helping out the festival of trees in a year where they can't do their, their normal activities as they, as they would. Maintenance crew have been preparing the outdoor rinks. We're getting support from a local contractor as we do every year for the rink in five-five-three at the Ray Benoit Park. And we'll get some support from Public Works for the Old Town Rink very shortly. We have advertised information regarding the Santa Claus Parade. We're planning and updating other annual town of Hay River activities. Not sure that we'll be able to do all the activities that we normally do. But we are planning for Skate with Santa and for the Festival at the Forks, which is the New Year's Eve celebration that, that we have annually. Other than that, we, we are discussing other activities that we could do. But some are more difficult, like Breakfast with Santa that we, we would have most years. Lastly, I just wanted to update council on some responses that we've recently received from the local environmental health officer. And, and passing on messages from the Office of the Chief Public Health Officer. They've indicated some concerns with regards to Christmas travel and the possible impact on, on rec complexes. And, and the, and the higher risk of, of COVID. So they've, they've decided that occupancies and guidelines would remain status quo until after the Christmas break. We had submitted a request for increasing occupancy in three different areas. But it, it appears that those occupancies will remain the same for the time being. I've, I've been updating user groups on those communications and also starting communications with user groups on the anticipated impact of Christmas travel on their numbers. And whether we think that the operations, especially the ice schedule, whether we think the ice schedule would be affected by, by, by travel south or by people isolating who have family members coming back from, from college, university or those types of situations. Those are my updates at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Questions for our Director of Recreation? Counselor Willis, go ahead.
Yeah, just more of a comment than anything else. I, I noticed in the track there this morning that there are a number of user groups and agencies that have put aside spaces to put up the trees for the festival of trees. I just want to recognize, I mean, the rec center and the group over there always seem to be coming up with some unique ideas for the community during these particular rough times. And I think it's going to look amazing when those trees are all lit up in there. So just hats off to that one.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Thank you. Oh, Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
Is this a question on the outdoor rinks? Do we, will they be, we think they'll be ready for, before Christmas?
The rink in the five-five-three area should be ready very shortly. Counselor Dory actually might have more of an update than, than I can give. But I was there last week and it looked like we had a good base of ice there and it shouldn't be too long before that one's ready. The Old Town Rink, we do need some support from Public Works. And so I would say that it will be dependent on the, on the snow we get in the next, in the next few weeks. If Public Works are busy with snow removal, then it'll slow down that process. But we do, we are aiming to have it ready before Christmas for sure.
Thank you. Further questions from council? Thank you, Director. Back to S A O Smith.
Thank you, Worship. The Director of Public Works and Services.
Thank you, Worship. Not, not a whole lot of updates from Public Works this week. Last week, our guys were just doing a lot of work on the snow clearing, sanding the roads out there, just keeping things safe on the roads. We have three guys in first aid training this week, so that'll be taking up a lot of time for, for them, a couple of days in that. I've been working on just getting budget stuff ready for 2021 budget and working on ICIP funding proposals that, that we're working through to submit in early December. And that's about all I have for updates this week.
Thank you. Any questions for our Director of Public Works? None being noted, I'll pass it back to S A O Smith.
Thank you, Worship. Just a few notes from me. As the Director of Public Works noted, myself and other staff are busy working on our ICIP application and, and budgeting. We are working now on our human resource planning for our high priority items, for our strat plan, our strategic plan. And, and getting momentum on, on moving that forward, ensuring we have our resources in place for, for next year to support that. Several meetings last week, one on land lease compliance meeting issues with, with the sub, sub-lease C. So lands was in, with, to meet with us and, and the sub-lease C on that. Felt some meetings and discussions with GNWT, hopefully leading to progress on some outstanding environmental site assessments that were associated with the NTCL and TS land surrender. Doesn't look like that's going to be completed this year, but I'm trying to ensure ownership and budgeting for next year. Begin that important process for us. And also note that we issued a joint reply that we being Northline Utilities, our corporation, Town of Hay River, to the P U B surrounding interests and deliverables there that would be associated with the power franchise, franchise transfer. So we're looking for some information from the P U B there, but trying to get that process moving after we hear decision on the, the recent appeal. And point of public notice from the Minister of Macca, we received notice from that department that our application under the disaster assistance policy for relief on costs associated with our landfill fire were rejected. So it's a disappointed disappointment for administration and council. The reasoning within it was that it was not considered a disaster under their criteria and that the health, safety and welfare of the residents were not at risk. So steps from, from that, and as I said, it's unfortunate for an application that was approximately a million dollars. The, our, our mayor plans to meet and has requested a meeting already with the minister to, to discuss that further. And that's, that's all I have for you today.
Thank you. Any questions for S A O Smith? Okay, none being noted, we'll move on to item number eight. A Tourism and Economic Development Report. And I'm not sure who's up for that. Counselor Willis, go ahead. And I'm not sure who's up for that. Counsel Willis, go ahead.
Just a question. Can we zoom the the reports up a little larger? So that we can read them a little better, please? Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, so that would be Counselor Duffer.
Thank you, worship. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Willows. At the town, the Council of the Town of Hay River accepts the Tourism and Economic Development Report for the month of October twenty twenty.
Thank you. Any questions from council? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight B, Emergency Services Monthly Report for October. Deputy Mayor Bouchard.
Yes, thank you, worship. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Chambers, that the Council of Town here accepts the Emergency Services Activity Report for October twenty twenty as presented.
Thank you. Any questions from council? None being noted. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Item eight C, Municipal Enforcement Monthly Report for October. Counselor Willows.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Moved by Counselor Willows, seconded by Counselor Duffer, that the Council of the Town of Hay River accepts the Municipal Enforcement Report for October twenty twenty as presented.
In queue. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Item eight D, Public Works Monthly Report for October. Would be Counselor Willows.
You, Madam Mayor. Moved by Counselor Willows, seconded by Counselor Chambers, that the Council of the Town of Hay River accepts the Public Works Monthly Report for October twenty twenty.
Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Item eight E, Recreation Monthly Report for October. Counsel Duffer.
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Dooley, that the Council of the Town of Hay River accepts the report entitled Recreation and Community Services Monthly Report for October twenty twenty as presented.
Thank you. Any questions to the motion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Item number eight F, Development Permit Application D twenty dash zero six five. That would be Deputy Mayor. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, worship. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Willows, that the Council of Town here reviews and approves all discretion all their discretionary and development permit application number D twenty dash zero six five and rezone the lot sixteen eighty three plan twenty eight thirty, Hay River, subject to the following conditions. That all of the requirements for the zoning and building bylaw eighteen twelve are met. An amendment to the general plan and zoning bylaw are required and that the land owner owners will be responsible for all costs related to the rezoning of the property.
Thank you. Any questions to the motion? None being noted. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Item eight G, twenty twenty one Draft Capital Budget. I will remind council that this is just the draft and it will be coming forward for final approval along, I guessing, in in conjunction with our O and M budget and that should be happening sometime in December. So Counsel Willis, go ahead.
Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Bouchard, that the Council of the Town of Hay River accepts the twenty twenty one Draft Capital Budget as presented.
Thank you. Any questions to the motion? All in favor? Thank you. I'd like to thank our Director of Finance at the same time, I know, and our directors for all the effort that goes into this stuff. As well as those that came out to our public meeting and or have submitted comments or concerns. So with that, we'll move on to item number nine, A. Appointment of a deputy mayor. So who wants to make the motion? We've only had one person put their name forward, so that would be Mr. Bouchard. Counsel Dooley, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. Moved recommendation that the Council of Town of Hay River appoints Robert Bouchard, Counselor Robert Bouchard as Deputy Mayor as per the Council Procedures Bylaw twenty four twenty.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Duffer. Any questions to the motion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. And welcome back, Mr. Bouchard. Who item nine C, Recreation Rates for twenty twenty one. Looking for a motion. Counsel Dooley?
Mayor Jamison, the tender award is
Oh, sorry, skipped one. Nine B, Tender Award for Sidewalk Cleaning. Looking for a motion? Counsel Duffer, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I move the recommendation that the Council of the Town of Hay River awards the tender for the twenty twenty sidewalk, snow and ice removal to J D Contracting.
And seconded by Counsel Dooley. Thank you. Any questions to the motion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Nine C, Recreation Rates for twenty twenty one. And I'll go to Counselor Dooley. Thank you.
Thank you, worship. I'll move the recommendation that the Council of Town of Hay River approves the twenty twenty one Recreation Rates as per Bylaw twenty four ten as recommended by the Recreation and Finance Committees.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Duffer. Any questions to the motion? None being noted. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Item nine D, the ICIP Application Report. Looking for a motion. Counsel Duffer, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. I move the recommendation that the Council of the Town of Hay River approves, one, the inclusion of the projects identified in this report on the Town of Hay River's ten year capital plan with the condition of approved project funding through ICIP. Two, an application to ICIP to support the projects identified in this report with a town commitment up to three point eight million.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Willows. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Item nine E, Development Permit Application D twenty dash zeros three zero three six, Homeless Shelter. Looking for a motion? Counsel Willows and seconded by Counselor Chambers. Go ahead, Counsel Willows. You're oh, sorry. Counsel Willows, you're on mute.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Recommendation that the Council of the Town of Hay River approve an amendment to Development Plant Permit D twenty zero three six to allow for a temporary homeless shelter at the proposed location.
Thank you. Seconded by, what's that? Counsel Chambers. Thank you. Any questions to the motion? Thank you, Counsel Dooley. Go ahead.
Thank you, worship. Just a question on when we say temporary by definition, what what is our our definition of temporary?
Thank you. S A O Smith?
Thank you, worship. I'm going to turn that to the Director of Public Works to see if we have that definition within our bylaw.
Thank you, worship. I don't believe we have a temporary defined in the bylaw. I think if council wanted to put restriction on what temporary means in this case, they would be able to do that if they chose. But no, we don't have a definition for temporary.
Further, Counsel Dooley, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. I guess my concern with that would then be who decides what temporary means and you know who holds that, who holds those controls or or that ability to just determine that your temporary time period is over?
Yeah, it's a good question. I'm wondering if we that that's a tough call. I know that they do have, the funding is is not indefinite. So I think there's a few variables on this file, but I I do think we should have an answer to that question before we proceed with approval on this. So how does council want to proceed? S A O Smith, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. You know, the Director of Public Works, as he expressed, you know, it could be up to this council if you wanted to to put a short term temporary timeframe to it. You know, if you want to entertain something there. I think we've, you know, we've run into this in the past on a few cases since since I've been here. You know, there there might be some legal interpretation that would help with it. But yeah, the the information that we have at this point as well is that it's been tied to some temporary funding arrangements with with the GNWT and the and the non NGOs that are working with the shelter. So so you know, I guess you do have the option if you do want to get further clarification on definition of temporary. You can proceed to to work on that or if you wanted to try and set something now that we can work within those timeframes, that would probably be the easiest.
Fair enough. Deputy Mayor had his hand up first. I'll go with it.
Yeah, well, I just have a question. Do we need the temporary? Like, it's being a homeless shelter. I mean, if the funding lapses, then it's not a homeless shelter anymore. And just if we scrap it, it's just, it's a temporary, it's a homeless shelter there for now, like. I mean, our bylaws allow that if it changes to something else, it needs a new permit. So is there a reason why we're putting it as temporary? Like, I I don't have a problem putting a set time, like, let's say, two years or I don't know the number, but is there a reason why we're putting the temporary in there?
Fair enough. Counsel Dooley, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. And I I guess just to be clear, I'm I'm in favor of this. I just don't, I like and I know that this, you know, the the fact that it's a shelter right now is contingent on some funding. I'm just I'm trying to think ahead if if they're able to secure more funding. If if this is tied to that funding and then they have to run through this process again, or if it's for you know, the basically the lifetime as as a shelter until it's until there's a permit to use it for something else or what we're thinking there. Like, I I'm I'm certainly in favor of it. I just don't I don't want this to be a situation where you know, say, a new council comes in and all of a sudden it's, okay, well, we don't want it to be there and it says in your motion that it was temporary and we can decide right now that it's your temporary time period is over, you know, something like that is I'm I'm looking, you know, for both parties, I I think on on our side and their side that there there would be some certainty, at least around the motion. Right now, temporaries to me could mean anything.
And I agree. So we can reword the motion if council would is okay with that. Counsel Runaway, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I I similar sort of questioning as to why the word temporary is being used. My understanding is that this is kind of being permitted as a discretionary use. I know that some of the previous comments were alluding to the fu- funding for actually operate as a homeless shelter, but of course, we would have no we would have no control or say over over the over that funding. So yeah, as as mentioned, I would I would think that we would remove the word temporary.
Yeah, and me, you know, I'm just reading it again. Maybe the temporary is describing the the type of homeless shelter. It is maybe it's just temporary. Meant to be there long term. Like, yeah, the I would I would I would look for the mover and second to remove temporary and just put it as a homeless shelter. The funding, the funding is going to determine whether it whether it stays there or not, or whether it keeps going again a lot, I guess.
Yeah.
And I guess like Counsel Dooley said, the problem is, you know, somebody looks at it down two, three years down the road and says, oh, well, it's only supposed to be temporary. We should be, you know.
Yeah.
We don't have a benchmark when to go revisit it again.
Yeah. Counsel Dooley, you had your hand up? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, worship. I my interpretation of that would be that temporary is is the fact that it's tied to a discretionary use sort of thing. Whereas if there were to be a different, you know, if there were to be a different permit put in place at some other point in time, then you would have to go back to go back through this process, which I think is a little a little but at at the same time, I could see why it would be there with that location. It's just, yeah, I I just, my concern was moreover the word temporary and and who gets to interpret what that means and and what that could potentially mean for that that organization, that location and and also for the town and you know, if we're if we're under the impression that we have a homeless shelter and then someone comes to us and says, well, it was temporary. You know, we we don't have that certainty either. So it's, I'm I'm not sure. I I'm guessing the the word temporary is in there, like I said, because of the fact that it is a discretionary use and it might might have to be there according to our our bylaws, but I I would like to at least have have some sort of some sort of timeline or or at least it understood that this is intended to last while it as long as it can last. So I don't know what the answer to that is, whether it's removing the word temporary, if we can get away with that, if that's something we have to get some more clarity on or or where we're at. I'm not sure if if administration might have some some input there.
Fair enough. S A O Smith?
Yeah, thank you, worship. Yeah, you know, with those discretionary approvals, there are certain conditions that you know, if the operation was to close for a certain amount of time. Doesn't the building might be used for similar purpose, or it might mean that you you would have to go through another approval process, but I'll pass it to Director of Public Works as well, in case he has anything further to elaborate on surrounding that.
Thank you, worship. There's nothing in our in our bylaws that would prevent us from removing the word temporary. We could take that out and just approve it as a homeless shelter. I believe temporary was put in there just kind of because our understanding of when the application came forward was that this was a temporary location and not necessarily the long term homeless shelter intent, but we can certainly approve it without the word temporary in there. That's not a problem.
Okay, so Counsel Dooley, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. And I I don't mean to go back and forth on this, but we remove the word temporary. It becomes a homeless shelter permanently. So what what is the answer to that? If if that's, you know, we, it was part of this appeal. You know, it went out. There was a there was a process made that there was a an appeal period. It wasn't appealed by anyone. Because it was a temporary situation. If it were meant to be a permanent situation, maybe there would be some appeals on that. I I just don't, I I'm having I'm having some trouble with the with the wording here and and what it could mean. I like, I wanted to, I obviously want to see it go forward and 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 continue to operate as they are. And and I know that they're having an impact and helping out to a lot of people in our community. I I don't want to see that stop. I just, I I I'm concerned about the wording and and how it leaves so many things up in the air and open.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to our Director of Public Works to confirm what exactly the, like you said, if we did have the Development Appeal Process followed, what exactly was on it? And my understanding is that it was to operate from what I can see on here, hotel motel. Right? Approval was given as per the requirements detailed in the attached letter. And at that time, notice the decision was posted. So if we can, there we go.
Can I suggest we table this item till the our next meeting?
Yeah, I'm thinking just for some clarity around exactly what we are approving. So I'm going to go back to council and poll you all with what how you would like to proceed. Do we change the wording or would we like to have clarity? Um so I'm going to go back to council and poll you all with what how you would like to proceed. Do we change the wording or would we like to have clarity? And I'll start with councillor Dufour. I see your hand up.
Thank you, your worship. Just reading down in chapter two. It it appears that the the use of the word temporary does refer to the shelter itself. It says, however, it has been determined that the current use of the building as a temporary shelter. Differs from the approved use in the application as a hotel motel. So maybe the who the the word temporary doesn't refer to the timeline. It's the name of the place. It's a temporary shelter as opposed to a hotel motel.
Yeah, and I guess that therein lies the confusion in in exactly this means, and I think we do. Uh agree with with. With yes, with the rest of them, that maybe we need to get some clarity on the issue and the word recommendation moving forward. So who who was my mover on that? I'm going to go back to my admin. Stacy? Oh, lost her. Does anybody, who made the motion? Do we remember?
I did.
Councillor Willows, and who seconded? Oh, councillor Chambers. Okay, can we, are you okay with us? Do you want to make a motion to table?
Yeah, I'll uh I'll make a motion to table this until the next meeting, until we get some clarity. On the def- not only the definition of temporary, but what it means in terms of taking the word out. Does that also change? Uh you know, the appeal process and all the rest of it.
Exactly.
Clearly, I moved the motion. I'm absolutely in favor of this, and my understanding is this will not affect the day-to-day operations of the shelter going forward until. We get that clarity, and if that is the case, then I have no issue.
Thank you. Okay, so motion to table, seconded by councillor Chambers. You're good with that? Okay. Um all in favor? Okay, motion carries. So we will bring that back at our next regular meeting. Um item nine F. Q three O and M financial statements. Looking for a motion. Councillor Willows?
Uh can we get that up, please, on the Zoom?
I've lost my.
Uh maybe if somebody has a printed copy.
There we go.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Recommended that the council of the town of Hay River approves the September Q three consolidated financial statement review. And forecast update as recommended by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Dufour. Any questions, questions to the motion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Um nine G, Q three capital statements. Councillor Willows?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Recommended that the council of the town of Hay River accepts the September Q three twenty twenty. Financial results with forecast revisions as recommended by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Dufour. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item number ten. We're looking for first reading on by law twenty-four ten recreation rates. Councillor Dewey?
Thank you, your worship. I'll move first reading on by law number twenty-four ten.
Seconded by. Councillor Chambers. Um. Any questions to the motion? None being noted. All in favor? Motion carries. Um councillor Dewey, second reading?
Thank you, your worship. I'll move second reading of by law number twenty-four ten.
Thank you. Seconded by. Councillor Granowaygan. Any questions? All in favor? Perfect. Motion carries. Thank you. Are we looking for unanimous consent for third and final?
I'd be fine to make the motion if uh.
If we can get unanimous consent.
We'll uh move for unanimous consent for third reading.
I need everybody's hand up. Okay, thank you, guys.
Your worship, I just had a question. Maybe we should delay it. I just. Yeah, are there going to be concerns from potential users of the rates? And we we went through the rec board, I guess, right?
Yeah, it was a recommendation. It was recommended by the the rec board.
Okay.
Yeah, it went through the rec committee and there's no significant changes to any of the the actual user freezer or rates there.
Yes.
Okay, great.
It also was on our committee meeting, so. We've seen it. Um everyone's good with third and final? We have unanimous consent? Let's see hands again, please. Go ahead, councillor Dewey. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. I'll move third and final reading of by law number twenty-four ten.
Thank you. All in favor?
Do you need the motion to go to unanimous consent?
Oh, sorry. I had unanimous consent. That's when I asked you to all put up your hands. That wasn't for the motion. Sorry. Were you fine with it?
I I made the motion.
But don't you actually need a motion?
Yeah, Keith Keith made the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Keep me on track. Keep me in line. Um okay, so there are no notices of motion, so that puts us on to item number twelve. So before we go in camera or I get a motion, or I guess I need a motion, hey, get a motion first to go in camera. Councillor Granowaygan, seconded by deputy mayor. So all in, uh before we go officially in, I'm going to ask each and one of you to. Swear to do you solemnly swear and sincerely affirm that you are alone and cannot be overheard while in camera. Okay, I'm going to start with councillor Anderson.
I swear.
Thank you. Councillor Dufour.
Thank you, your worship. I swear.
Councillor Willows.
I swear profusely.
Thank you, councillor Granowaygan.
Swear.
Uh deputy mayor Bouchard.
I swear.
Councillor Dewey?
Thank you, your worship. I also swear profusely.
Councillor Chambers.
I swear.
Thank you. Okay, so motion to go in camera. Or I guess all in favor. I have the motion, so all in favor. Perfect. Thanks, guys. Um it is seven forty-seven. I'll give you three minutes to. Grab some water and meet back here. If that's a.